Last meeting in order, so everybody's here except my.
United States. Republic for which says coronation. I have two additions to the agenda. Number nine will be the twenty twenty six Murray County Ambulance Contract. Number ten will be utility billing. Does anybody else have any additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve, so move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Wow, you got it.
Okay.
Minutes from January fifth are in your pockets. Any questions or amendments to those minutes?
None nor stand approved.
Claims in tab two, and there were a few that were in front of you that arrived today. You'll notice that the Murray County Ambulance Contract is actually on that listed claim, so. If you have any doubts that you'll move that later agenda, you may want to pull that now, but I figured that we're pretty safe there, but I just wanted to mention it.
Any other questions? The motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Uh, pending Department of Commerce comments and memo on the Northwest National Gas Acquisition under tab three. Um, I won't go into great detail there. That was more of just an FYI for you guys. It was overall very positive. Uh, we will need a PUC hearing and process for them to approve the sale, being that it's valued over one million dollars, but. Department of Commerce, which serves as the analysis and legal part of the PUC, is recommending approval. Uh, based on their review of everything and exempted the transaction from some of the. Your steps that they viewed as nonimperative to this specific sales. Any questions there? I do not have any idea of a timeline of when the PUC may hear that. This is, the petition was actually filed by Northwest Natural Gas and us as a joint petitioner. Um, so our legal was involved in it, but they were the main author, so their legal team is who the main. Uh, letter F, Wonder World, the three hundred thousand dollar loan was moved unanimously from the. Uh, county board this morning, and so that came from a five to zero recommendation from the Murray County EDA. And uh, earlier in the month and um, kind of the final step to the process for Murray County's. Uh, participation in it. So two hundred thousand dollars forgivable, um, amortized, so to speak, over fifteen years, and then the three hundred thousand will be over. Twenty-five plus three. What I mean by that is it's deferred principal and interest for the first three years, but the amortization payment schedule is over a twenty-five year term. So four percent interest and that three years starts from the date of dispersment, not from origination. Uh, that was fantastic. There was a good discussion, um, a couple texts from county folks afterwards and glad to be part of it and. Forward, so about three hundred thousand left um, to raise for the two point one, and the hope still is that we get that by the end of April. And that they're able to break ground later in the spring. So expect. Uh, Wonder World to be back on the agenda more frequently for the uh, property transaction and that stuff. Yeah. Any questions there?
What update on that? What can we say as far as the electrics?
Yeah, it's a good question. So rebuttal was filed at the end. Oh, that wasn't anywhere too. Yeah, beginning of January. So Blake and I submitted rebuttal and then Dave, and then we have another witness, actually, um, same with Mark Mitchell. Who is a transmission uh, expert, former Excel person and MISO and. Um, he's been really good. And then that Mark Fritsch, who I think was virtually a participant in one of our meetings in the past. He is also used to work for Excel, um, and submitted testimony as well. If anybody wants the P, they're kind of a pain in the rear to find online with the PUC docket program. So if you want me to send you just PDFs of all those, I sure can. On Excel's side, they had um, the same people as filed original testimony. So Al Crew kind of hit the policy side of things, and then Lisa Peterson was their main testifier, just like Davis for us and. Spoke to the uh, numbers part of it as well. Um, they are still at forty-five million as their number, forty-two of that being a loss of revenue. The other three being the valuation of this asset itself, this asset, uh, which we agree with. Seems like same number that they had even leading into his testimony and that we put in our testimony, so. We agree on one thing. That's about it. So now, sir rebuttal is due uh, the, this Thursday. And that is the final round of written testimony and the evidentiary hearing slash oral testifying is. The fifth and sixth of February, so we know that Blake and I will be up there at some point. I'm guessing most of the day on Thursday and and perhaps Friday as well. There's uh, it's yet to be scheduled in terms of specific times. From there, there's um, some time for the administrative law judge to think about things and take into consideration all the written and oral testimony. And then I think her report is due by the end of March to the PUC. And then you get to file exceptions, which are basically what you do not agree with within her report to PUC. And then the PUC schedules their process as well, which is to be determined. And I'll sum that up.
I think our. Team or whatever it is you want to call their, they've been very thorough and they're doing a wonderful job. Reviewing, feuding, or whatever you want to call it, um, in regards to their testimonies. They, the last round came back and as soon as that, you get to see that right away and. Bunch of the stuff that we had gone back at him with. Some of the stuff was, they're, they're doing a really good job, long and short of it.
Yeah, to Blake's point, some of the stuff that Excel put in their rebuttal, because you don't, you don't see each other before you file. And everybody's filing at like three fifty PM on that day that it's due for that very reason. You don't want to have, be able to have the other party utilize what's in here. So a lot of the stuff that was in Excel's rebuttal, we had already addressed in our rebuttal. And so it was like, well, now we don't really have to get into that and sir rebuttal, we can focus on the other things, the other things we don't agree with. They stated in rebuttal. Be good. Every member of our team is very passionate. I've worked with a lot of consultants and attorneys in my time here and. This is the most animated that I've seen. It's, we're not just another check in the mail for them. I feel like uh, they're. They feel it to be as significant of a process as, as we do here, which is good, because they're putting their heart and soul into it, just like we are, so. But. All right, unfinished business. We had uh, stated, bring back some information on what's necessary, what's not necessary. The. Boards in brown, orange, whatever you want to call that uh, color are not super necessary, in my opinion. You can see later on in your packet that the Park Aquatic Center Recreation Board is established by ordinance back in two thousand nine. Um, you can see their duties there. They are. You know, there's a list of them. Many of them. All of them are being done by staff or the council already in from, so. I would say if the council wants more of an advisory board, community rep kind of input from that, then certainly we can keep it around and be more intentional about. Calling meetings. But otherwise, I don't, in my opinion, I don't see any part of the process of being lost if we. Get rid of that board. The Policy Committee is not in ordinance and in my time here has never met, ever. Believe the intent of that committee and that if there's any new policies or major revisions of policies that that committee would. Back it out through that process before council. Again. Just going that all but our own report without.
Now, the ordinance outlining Park Aquatic Center Recreation Board, the duty due are quite extensive and quite. Quite extensive as far as, you know, potentially being involved in the process and, and having a little say in the process. And, you know, we talked about this before. I had concerns about before I'd been on that committee and never, we've never met in all the years I've been on and, and so. Thus the, especially the necessity of having a committee that doesn't meet and hasn't met and if it's necessary and, you know. You're right, you know, we are, you know, handling all the duties that are listed in this, you know, in this ordinance and so. You know, I.
I am a firm believer and, and I'm just one person, it's certainly an opinion, not just a fact that there. Certainly is, can be too many cooks in the kitchen at times and the more voices out. Semi-public input, of course, but um, yeah, it just.
Right, I hear what you're saying, absolutely. You know, I think people are, I think people, I get, I get reached out to with anonymous letters. With concerns about city business and particular parks type stuff that we, you know, so people do notice, they want to have things they want to address. And then if they have a point or something they like to make, it seems that there are people that are free to do that, and that's great. And I've had people come up to me because I am on, that is the board that I sit on and I'm happy to hear those concerns and we've addressed many of them. So, um, you know, I think that we're not, we're not stifling anybody's opinion or input if they wish to make such as far as our parks and. You know, calls and whatnot, um. But I also don't think it, I think it's silly then, you know, I wonder these folks that have been on the committee here, you know. Yeah, sure, I'll be on that board and then there's never meetings, so I don't know what they think. I guess I would, I think I would be in favor of just dismantling that and. You know, avoiding or revolting that ordinance or whatever the process is for that, but.
Be completely acceptable, in my opinion.
I would agree with that. I think where everybody that's on the council is currently handling that type of business now is so accessible. Most, I hope, watchable. Uh, do we see enough people in the public that they either say something or they're, you're more than welcome to come in public? And speaking, speaking at council meeting too, so I don't see a reason for people.
Okay. See, they feel the same way.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Um, the ones in yellow are like changes, so we'll, we'll ratify Dana and Steve on zoning right now with that very well. Have a change once we find new members and just ratify those individual ones of the, at that time, those changes, but we'll, we'll ratify the full slate of the zoning board right now. Library Board is good to go. Uh, up above, Nick Oberboller is taking uh, Blake's place as a weather spotter on the fire department. And then Chris, um, when you were working on your tan, the last meeting, uh, you got volunteered for the personnel committee for the next. Uh, two-year term, so unless you have strong objections to that, I think it's, it would determine that it was. You were due.
Yeah, it's my turn.
Uh, the following page is the slate of twenty twenty-six fire department officers, which we usually ratify uh, as well. Mostly importantly, the uh, the top third there with the chief and second chief. But always good to ratify the fish fry committee as well.
And I see Mark's on the fish fry committee twice, so I'm not sure.
It's very important.
At least, possibly the chairman. Without, just be a motion to approve those uh, slates of appointments for twenty twenty-six?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a motion to be added to that park board and the policy committee's first?
Um, yeah, you could, you can vote to repeal that. Um, I mean, we'll have to have a formal repeal process with the being that it's an ordinance, but that would be a good motion to have on record to direct. That movement.
I would so hope that we repeal that ordinance that sets up the park and aquatic center rec board.
Blanket and all things, so just get rid of that one too.
Good.
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
All right, blue business. On the fifth of January, we appointed Sergeant Kaufman to Acting Chief of Police. And uh, following that appointment, the Personnel Committee contacted, or Personnel Committee and myself contacted the union. Mr. Hoffman expressed interest in the position of, of chief permanently, and so there was a provision in the contract that was a ten-day. Uh, internal posting, the union waived that uh, that, that right and um. Gave the full backing of, of Mr. Hoffman to the position, and then the Personnel Committee and myself had a chance to meet one more time with Jesse. And uh, I had a chance to sit on his first staff meeting the other week, and uh, we are all impressed and wholeheartedly recommending that. Acting Chief Hoffman be appointed to the position of Police Chief, uh, probationary period of six months. And be placed on grade nine, step eleven, with an hourly rate of forty-seven oh four. And requesting that to be backdated to January fifth, when the council made him acting chief as he's been doing the job since then.
I would make that in the form of a motion.
First and second.
Sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Congratulations.
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 Next up, law enforcement contract of Murray County Sheriff's Department. We are running a bit short now. Uh, it's just me and Jesse, and we have an officer still on medical leave before comp. And uh, we are hiring, um, but we need some help from the sheriff's office. So this contract that was in your packet hasn't changed since the packet went out. It was approved in this form by the Board of Commissioners this morning. You see the email from our insurance attorney that recommended we get a certificate of insurance, so I provided that to me this morning at the meeting. So twenty dollars on call, seventy-five dollars per hour, or any call for service billed per quarter and billed in quarter hour increments. Um, any questions for Keith, Jesse, or myself?
Will you be doing a regular schedule of this then, assuming?
Yes, we're doing part-time and we will be, and then what we can feel and tell is going to be. I'll take all for us.
Thinking mostly county coverage for days, at least for now, I mean, that'll make changes when it goes on.
Hopefully, it's just, you know, for another month or so, but uh, temporarily be us to uh, cover those uh, hours that. We just can't make it in, you know, to, to work without uh, being exhausted and burning out.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions for yourself or Jesse or he? Recommend approval of that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. First and second, we're in the other discussion.
Just thanks to the Sheriff's Department for working cooperatively. That's great to see and we appreciate it a lot.
Absolutely.
All in favor, so aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed.
That was good. Uh, next up, some fire department stuff, tires, pagers, and some training. I wanted to, I'm gonna throw you through a loop here. At the county board this meeting, Keith informed us that there's a state contract for the roll-in owl through what?
Yeah, see, that's for Chris.
Oh, so that is say, good pricing. Oh, wonderful, senior handy. All budgeted items uh, with it for the tires and the pagers, the radios and pagers will be the fire equipment fund and the tires were within the general. Event maintenance. And then that fire school is one that uh. So Lake Crystal, what you guys usually go to every year?
Yep.
The Roseville one is new.
That's a leadership class, there are maybe some instructors from some other states.
So that should be one, two, three, four different motions.
Is the training, that, that's all budgeted too?
Yep.
You, you have the details on cost of that. I noticed that wasn't included.
Um, the training in the Roseville one is a hundred dollars for the tuition, I'll call it. That is refundable through the MDFPE for our training money, so the, in and out. And the, and while, I mean, one of the whole ten costs. The trainings in Lake Crystal, they range from anywhere to the hundred, uh, hundred and fifty-ish for the tuition. That is also all refundable through the MDFPE. Uh, we'll just have call and emails.
So you'll have um, will be six different fellows going there or six different firefighters going, right?
Hopefully, yes, that is the plan.
Okay.
The uh, one of those, the leadership one, Terry and I planned to do that one. We were both fine, you know, like, so what? It's not like it used to be. We used to have a waiting list to order these things, and nowadays, we gotta strongly encourage um, guys to go. So we're, we're working on trying to get. People wanting and experiencing from this, so.
Sure.
Same questions on the tires or the pagers, radios?
All right, I'm actually in the mood, so that's nice to see.
Want a separate motion for each one, Josh?
I think the training can be one motion for those two, so three separate motions should be good.
I'll make a motion, we approve the uh, middle for the tires. Second. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
I will make a motion that we approve the request from ratings and pagers.
First and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
I'm making a motion, we've done our firefighters training in Lake Crystal and Roseville.
In that.
First and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Four ninety-three, is that original tires?
Yes, I thought, and the ninety-two, I believe. We're gonna take the one about seventy, put it on the ninety-two and. It'd be a little bit bumping along, but future life, it'll be.
Item number eight, MinDOT Aeronautics Zoning Grants, uh, be the grant. One blanket motion is fine for this. It'd be approving the grant agreement and authorizing my, I assign and then uh, moving resolution only forty twenty-three six. This makes the same, exact same thing. So this is for our airport zoning plan project, the state picked to be funded. Uh, the state's obligation is forty-seven seven, uh, we will, there, there's, I believe, there's fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, for this forty-seven seven reimbursed by the state.
I make a motion, we uh, authorize the grant agreement.
And a resolution.
And a resolution. First and second, any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Number nine, twenty twenty-three Murray County Ambulance Agreements. Uh, this is for the entire year in an amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. The capital amount did not go up. Population was adjusted uh, per the demographer's office, and this exact amount was budgeted in the twenty twenty-six general fund budget. And recommending approval of that.
Double.
All right, first and second, any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Got the last thing?
No, it is not. So this is not something that has to be acted on tonight. This was kind of my last minute whim of an idea that I had, so we. On December twenty-fourth, the USPS announced that postmarked dates were not going to be the date that the facility receives your letter. So they're not canceling them, as the term is called, uh, at the places anymore. They wait till they get to the bigger sorting facilities and then, so you may drop your letter or bill or whatever in the fifteenth, and then it's not being stamped until the eighteenth or twentieth or whatever. They sit there and be abyss for a few days. Because of that, people aren't getting our postcards, so I didn't get like my bill until the twelfth, and it's due the fifteenth. Today, we got a huge amount of payments in the mail on the twentieth, and they're due the fifteenth. None of those that were, we're not going to count any of them late, because um, it's not their fault. Now, one day of that is just Smart Little King Junior Day yesterday, but we, I have a strong feeling this is going to continue, so. I would like to ask the council their willingness to push the due date of bills back from the fifteenth to the twentieth. I don't think we should go any later than that, because then you're going to bump up against us having to get bills out, which we usually try to do between like the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth. And that turnaround of inputting the payments and then getting the new bills out is going to be a nightmare if you push that, because a lot of people wait till the due date to pay their bill. Uh, but I don't think five days, five days is gonna account for most of that mail lag. Um, and then we'll try to be more Johnny on the spot of getting bills out maybe a day or two earlier. And uh, that should remedy most of it, but it, it doesn't seem fair to most folks that they're getting their bill on the, you know, tenth, twelfth, and it's due on the fifteenth, and then they're mailing it. Like, all of the ones we received today were postmarked on the sixteenth. Uh, and I know that that's not when they dropped them. Almost all of the people in today's mail are people that paying. You know, they're, they're mailing their check on the tenth or twelfth. Um, as it is, they probably mailed the same day that they got it, and we didn't get it until the twentieth.
I don't have any problem with this. It makes a lot of sense, but it sure raises a question about. I don't have any problem with this. It makes a lot of sense, but it sure raises a question about, you know, there's so many things that. You know, you um like, for instance, paying real estate taxes, it's if it's postmarked by, you know, and all that, like. Now they're gonna, now you're saying, sorry, we got post offices, you know, you marked that day, that's.
You can. Uh walk up to the post, post office in San Marcos, postmark, and they will still do that. That is the one.
Which I'm not sure if everybody is.
Might not happen if you drop it in its box.
No.
Right, and I was aware that this is handling.
If you ever, if you're, if you're looking. Like. Ninety plus percent of the postmarks on everything is mini.
Yep, yeah. Yep, it used to be, man, it used to be with them, but it was Nacado and now, now it's St. Paul.
I, I would go and support this.
Leave the motion for that.
You should have a motion for that, yes.
I would make that a motion.
First and second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion.
How's it?
With. No other businesses, there are motion to. Back it, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, meeting and drinks.